I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Board Trustee of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations to Dan, John, and John on the reelection.
Thank you.
May I please have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The Board will reconvene at approximately 5:30.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Good evening. The Board will now reconvene from executive session. No board business took place. Would everyone please rise for the presence of the President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is election of officers, in particular, the nomination for President of the Board. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate John.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations?
Is he still alive?
He's still alive. He's growing.
Any discussion? Would the Board please motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Seconded. It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. John has been nominated for office of President of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education. Congratulations. I will now administer the oath of office to the President. Would you please rise? Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President
of the Board of Education
of the Board of Education
of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District
of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you. Switch.
Chris, if you didn't want John, you're too late.
Sorry, I'm sorry. You missed your opportunity to vote no.
I was trying to call in. Nobody answered.
Presume we are.
Where is it?
Here I am. Do we do the?
We do Dan.
What?
This is the first day of the job?
I know it's a Board of Ed meeting.
Wait till we have that computer.
Let me get my... Who are we doing now?
Right here, look.
The Vice President.
Vice President.
I'd like to open the floor for nominations. Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dan.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dan Asrati has been nominated for the Office of Board of Education, Vice President for the Monroe Woodbury Central School District. Congratulations. I will now administer the oath of office. Please raise your right hand as you read this oath.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Here we are again. All right. Where are we now?
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
Have to take the oath right here.
The oath of office for the Superintendent of Schools. Want to just read it?
Yes. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You continue. For years and years into the future
Thank you.
We sincerely hope... May I have a motion for the appointment of school officials? Do I need to read all of those?
What about the district clerk?
Hmm?
We did that? Oh, school officials is first.
All the school officials. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I now administer the oath of office for the district clerk. Do you want to just read it?
Sure. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Lynn.
Congratulations.
I have a motion to approve the appointments of school attorneys, auditors, central treasurer. How many are these? Oh, my gosh. All of those other people. Do I have a motion? Be here all night.
Oh, my goodness.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Congratulations to the 783,570 people who are in that list for other appointments. Motion, the Board of Education approves the list of impartial hearing officers, the rotational list for the 2017-18 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the resolution, the Board of Education pursuant to Section 200.5 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. Hereby delegates, the President of the Board of Education is the representative of the Board who can appoint an impartial hearing officer in the event such a hearing is requested by the parent of a student with a disability. It's been moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to designate the following official depository for funds, Chase Bank, NY Glass Sterling National TD Bank. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve authorizations. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Superintendent is authorized to approve instructional staff conferences. Business and Management Services to approve conferences for Buildings and Grounds, Transportation, Health, Safety and Security, Technology, Food Services, Business and Payroll. Establishment of Petty Cash Funds, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Management Services, and Superintendent of Schools authorized to certify payroll. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Approval of the resolution, all policies of the Board of Education previously approved and in effect shall remain in effect until amended as prescribed in Policy 1410. Policy development, provided further that all 2016-17 policy revisions to the existing policies from New York State School Boards Association is listed on the schedule, on file with a district clerk are hereby approved unless pulled separately for discussion by the Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Do I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting and convene into regular session?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in the regular session. The mission statement, "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." We have a memorial resolution because we lost one of our own recently. This is a resolution in memory of Mark A. Mickey O'Brien, Jr., unanimously adopted by the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education at its reorganizational meeting on Tuesday, July 11, 2017. Whereas, the Monroe Woodbury Central School District family with deep regret has learned of the passing of Mark A. Mickey O'Brien, Jr., and whereas Mr. O'Brien served the children of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District as a trustee of the Board of Education from July 1, 2013 until June 30, 2016, and whereas Mr. O'Brien was straightforward, honest, and direct, he earned the respect of others as an advocate for the success of all students and that every single child in the Monroe Woodbury Central School District receives an excellent education. And whereas leadership, personal responsibility, and civic involvement were important to Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien was a corporal in the Marines, a Vietnam veteran, and a proud supporter of the Wounded Warrior Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District Board of Education hereby express their profound feeling of loss and also their deep appreciation for all that Mark A. Mickey O'Brien, Jr. meant to the school system and the community. As the above resolution is adopted by the Board, it will become part of the official historical records of the district and will serve as a memorial lasting for all time. We don't have to approve that. It's a memorial resolution.
You can give it to him.
Mr. O'Brien's son is here.
I think he's over there.
I'd like to give this to you, sir. He was a wondrous guy. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have approval for the... Motion to approve a revised agenda?
Motion.
Thank you. That's why you're the Vice President. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. We have a public discussion on the draft Code of Conduct. You want to... Anyone here signed up for that?
But I'd like Dr. Hasler to speak a little bit about it.
Dr. Hasler.
I used the word "a little bit" about it. Notice that?
Stress the word. Be careful.
Stress the word.
Can we set a timer?
It's a new year. Let's not give him so much you know what.
Stop with stealing.
You mean time?
First and foremost, the Code of Conduct establishes no bullying, no tolerance within the school district. I'd like to begin with that. The Board of Education has to annually approve the Code of Conduct. Part of the regulation for the Code of Conduct is having a public hearing. A draft version of the Code of Conduct is... has been placed on Board Docs. Normally, there's a letter that accompanies the Code of Conduct with any updates or changes that have been made from the previous version. The only changes that have been made this year is we updated the DASO coordinators in the building. Beyond that, there have been no other language changes within the Code of Conduct. However, I do want to acknowledge some work that has been happening this year. Lori Hock, our Athletic Director, and William Earl, our Director of Physical Education, have started a committee to work on and examine the athletic portion of the Code of Conduct. You've heard some public comments at various Board of Education meetings about athletics and the role and behaviors of our athletes and things like that, and that was an area that we wanted to focus some attention on because that aspect of the Code of Conduct hasn't been looked at in a number of years. One of the things that they're doing is they're pulling samples from various other school districts and looking at the work that they've done. We didn't want to rush it, which is the reason why we haven't included the work thus far in this year's Code of Conduct. However, it will definitely be something that's included in the Code of Conduct for the 18-19 school year. So that work actually began during the year, but we don't have it at a point yet where we are ready to roll it out. We need to approve the Code of Conduct at the July Board of Education meeting because there's an abbreviated version that goes in student handbooks, that goes in the copy of the calendar that gets sent home, which is another regulation that we're required to communicate that to the community. So we are asking approval for the 17-18 Code of Conduct.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion or questions?
Under Board of Education, Mrs. Change to Ms. MS?
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
With that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm a liberator woman.
So carried. Questions and comments from interested citizens? Lorraine Loning.
My name is Ms. Lorraine Loning. I'm a district resident, mom of two boys, one graduate, and the other will be in the 11th grade in this fall. I'm also a district employee. This evening, I'd like to speak to the Board about substitute teachers and how they impacted my student. I want to repeat, this narrative is only regarding substitutes and how it impacted my son, nothing else. My son is enrolled in mostly honors classes, so in those classes, when a teacher is absent and assigns work, the students just do it. There is generally no problems. Last year, he had one class that was more of a general population class, and when the teacher was absent, there were often, often behavior problems. Towards the end of the school year, there were big problems. My son reported to me that some students were doing all of the following: piling desks and chairs on top of each other, then knocking them over, were throwing textbooks at the walls trying to rip posters, were screaming out curse words, and were drawing pictures of genitalia on the whiteboard, all while the substitute was sitting there. Eventually, the sub called for security, and at that point, the offending students left the classroom, unknown whereabouts. I called Mr. Kravitz, the high school principal, the next day and told him my tale of woe and asked him what was going on in this class. He said he was going to look into it and address it, and a few days later... and I know he did, because a few days later, the teacher was absent again. And I should point out that the... she told that the students that. She scolded them and told them she had heard about their horrific behavior and how no one wanted to substitute for that class. Anyways, the next time she was absent, they got a different sub, and the class was a little better, he was able to control it a little better, but not much. He, too, ended up calling either security or administration, and my son reported that a man in a suit... a man in a suit, was present for the latter part of the class, and then it was the end of the year, okay? So nothing else could happen. I'm bringing this up to you because while I was satisfied with Mr. Kravitz and how he was going to continue to monitor the situation, there have been several personnel changes, and I don't want this matter to get lost in the shuffle. Mr. Kravitz is now Assistant Superintendent for Human and Resources. La di da. So I am confident that if possible, he'll be better able to screen subs before they actually interact with students. Mr. Kastie, he's the new high school principal. I want him to know that there are some problems that need addressing. It could be with the administration, the teachers, the subs, the students, or a combination of all of those. That's fostering an environment where reckless and potentially dangerous behavior can occur. And I'm hopeful that there'll be consequences, that maybe if this happened earlier in the year, there would have been ISS and OSS or something like that, so that people would know that if they disrupt the educational process, there are consequences. And perhaps most importantly, I want the Board, the Board to know that there are problems with substitutes. I'm not sure if any of you have students in the high school, but some of the classrooms, frankly, are just not safe when the regular teacher is absent, and that's how I feel. Moving forward, I've instructed my son that if he feels things get out of control in any of his classes, that he should ask for a pass, go to guidance, and let them call security or administration, okay? Because I don't want him to be in a situation that he sees as unsafe. So I appreciate your attention to this serious matter.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 14, 2017.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. A motion to approve the establishment of the following Board of Education committees: audit committee, policy committee, and facility committee, and the temporary committee, the boundary line alteration committee. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the 2017-18 professional development plan.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any explanation?
Okay. Similar to the Code of Conduct, we are required annually to have the Board of Ed approve our annual professional development plan. The plan is reviewed each year by a committee that consists of administrators and teachers. The role of the committee is to establish the goals and the activities to support professional development for the following school year based upon various changes in regulation and the needs of the school district. We also now, after the plan gets approved by the Board of Ed, we have to submit it to the State Education Department because teachers who have been recently certified are now required to have a certain number of professional development hours, and those hours count if they're offered by the school district and our professional development plan is submitted on record, and we maintain our approved status within the State Department. So we're asking Board approval for the PDP.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just fix the Ms.'s again.
No problem. I apologize.
It's okay.
With that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome. I'm remiss. I should have said this right at the beginning to
No, no.
Welcome you to the...
Stop it.
To this grand and wondrous table.
It is grand.
And big.
It's... it is. It's great.
Motion to approve the following textbooks: Physics for Scientists and Engineers, A Strategic Approach, and College Keyboarding and Word Processing.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions?
Yes.
There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. A motion to approve the Area 9 Director of the New York State School Boards Association, nominate John T. Redman.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. It's John's letter is in Board Docs. He will hopefully take over the Area 9 directorship, and he's a good guy, so my little aside. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Personnel?
Good evening. That's what I say in person, right?
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Carroll.
Do it right.
I will. I'll try my best. I have it all written down, so I'd like to begin by saying thank you to the Board and the Cabinet for even allowing me to sit here tonight. To say it's an honor is an understatement, so thank you for that. Thank you for taking the time to review the items listed under Personnel. There are a number of things I'd like to point out to you. As you know, summer months are busy. It's been a busy six days since I've started. I've already had the chance to meet with a number of new hires, all of whom are excited to make a positive mark on our district. Tonight, we actually have a few here with us. We have two teachers, two teachers who are being recommended, and an administrator, I believe. Yes, I know, Caitlin. So I don't know... I know we've done this differently in the past, but sometimes we've had them explain who they are, or would you like me to just do that? If at all. Do you want to know who they are?
You figure it out.
You figure it out.
I'm all about delegating. That's great.
The mantle of leadership.
So we have our new middle...
Duck the responsibility.
We have our new middle... We have our soon-to-be, hopefully, middle school assistant principal, who's next to Mike Vasano. So would you like to tell us a little bit who you are and a little about yourself?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Caitlin Caldwell. I'm thrilled to be here, very nervous and excited to see all of you. I've been an employee of the New York State Public Schools for 12 years. Worked as a teacher, then a assistant principal, and a principal for four years, and I'm so proud of my fellow students.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And to my left, we have Jennifer, right?
I'll be the person specialized for the elementary and middle school, and I will be working with Ms. Lynn.
Well, welcome.
Welcome back.
And lastly, we have Amanda, who's in the front, and she's been great.
Hi. I'm Amanda Greenblatt, and I'm a French teacher at the middle school and high school. I'm very grateful for this opportunity, so I thank the Board of Ed, obviously, for proving, and certainly the middle schoolers have helped along the way. Very grateful for this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
So after their long and storied careers here in our district, they will get to a point that three of our employees are at tonight, and that's the point where we accept their resignations for the purpose of retirement. We have three employees that will be approved tonight, and I simply want to say thank you to them for their years of service and then wish them well. And then lastly, you'll notice on the agenda that we have a number of summer positions, ranging from summer school to summer youth employees. The summer youth employees are the ones you see in buildings and grounds and in our offices, and they're running around with the MCC crew over there. So our district is a lot like New York City, where we rarely sleep. And with all that said, I respectfully request your approval of the items listed under Personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions for our new Assistant Superintendent? Well, there being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And to you. Business and financial, Patrick.
So, John, I would ask for the approval of the items under the Business and Financial section, which include our standard monthly financial reports, our Budget Status Report, Budget Transfer Report, Check Register, the High School, Middle School, Extra Classroom Activity Reports, Investment and Funds Report, Revenue Status and Treasuries Report. We have five donations on the agenda. One clarinet from Jack Madden, and one Bach Model 42 Stradivarius Trombone from Ms. Elizabeth Sherman. I'd like to thank those folks for those donations. A STEM grant in the amount of $999 from Orange and Rockland to North Main Science Program. A grant in aid, or bullet aid, I believe, from Senator Larkin's office. A grant in aid, or bullet aid, I believe, from Senator Larkin's office in the amount of $26,500. We'd like to thank Senator Larkin for that. And a donation for $234 from Ahold USA Stop &amp; Shop A+ Program. And $274 donation from the Smith Clove PTA for the use of, I guess at the principal's discretion, so thank you to the PTA. We have three resolutions. One is for the use of non-resident tuition rate for non-resident billing, and that's the prescribed rate from the New York State Ed Department. We have the appointment of a representative to the health plan, the Orange Ulster School District Health Plan, as the Board of Directors, so that can be any, anyone who's designated. Typically, it's the business official, so that's what we're doing tonight. And we have an appointment to, similar to the health plan, to the workers' compensation board also, be the business official. We have a few miscellaneous items from Smith Clove and Sapphire, small miscellaneous items as obsolete items. And 19 contracts for contract transportation, student tutoring, special education-related services, security management, building systems management, that's a system that regulates the HVAC of the buildings, and the school climate survey, which incidentally is not about weather. All right? That's a confusing point, but anyways, so 19 contracts for your approval. And that's it.
Motion.
Second.
Who gave the motion?
Well.
Any comments or questions?
Are we still discussing this?
There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'd like to approve the following recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education Items, 21.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5 on our agenda.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Michael Solotto cannot be here tonight, and nor can Stacy McClery. They sent their regrets, so we will go on to reports by Board and Central Office. Chris?
Happy summer. Everyone enjoy the summer. I don't have anything really to report.
Same here. We have a meeting tomorrow?
At 4:00.
At 4:00.
Facilities Committee.
Yeah, facilities. I don't know if Patrick has anything to add.
Yeah, we're going to talk about a few different items. We're going to talk about the long-range facilities plan and the list that the architect had put together. We had our need-to-have and our nice-to-have items, so we're going to kind of whittle that down and talk about the pros and cons. We're going to talk about the state of the Smart Schools Bond Act project, so that's the cabling project, where that stands right now. We're going to talk about, a little bit about the financial status of the transformer project at Seabee and Pine Tree. And I think we may touch on the, sort of, the future of the Harriman Center as a district facility and asset.
Good.
Welcome, Matt.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
I'd like to welcome Matt, and I would also like to welcome our new teachers and our new assistant principal, and wish you luck, and wish everybody a very enjoyable summer.
Leah?
I also wish everyone a great summer.
Bargoff?
Summer is busy in technology, so we're upgrading our wireless infrastructure and rolling out some more Chromebooks, getting ready for September.
Good. Eric?
Apologies to Mrs. Ms. Carroll. I almost did it. We will definitely make those changes.
Thank you.
Congrats to Matt.
Thank you.
Very exciting working with you in a different capacity. And just also, quick congratulations on graduation. It was a bummer bringing it inside, but it was nice walking outside, having it be torrential rain when it's like a, it's a difficult decision to make, but when you walk out and it's pouring rain outside, obviously, it was a good call. So the ceremony was fantastic, being indoor still. And happy summer to everybody. Thanks.
Patrick?
Just welcome aboard, Matt. So far, so good, right? We've done a lot already.
Good spot.
Welcome to our new appointments. This evening, I want to thank Andre Rudiac also for taking the role of, I guess, interim facilities director, right? As we look for a permanent position there. And I also wanted to mention one thing we're doing with the tax collection in September. We're going to get credit cards, allow the public to use credit cards. It's something that's, you know, sort of, it's not really that progressive. A lot of places do that. We haven't done it. Takes a little bit of effort and work, but I think we'll get that online for September, so that'll be another option for the public.
Can I just ask a question? I guess I could.
Yeah, you just did.
You just did.
I just did. Do credit card companies allow you to pay your taxes using your credit card? I thought that most of them don't.
Just Amex.
Just American Express?
Amex won't let you.
Amex, well, okay.
They do. There's a fee, right? It's a pretty good, like, beyond the regular credit card fee to do that, so
Oh, there is a fee?
Yeah.
But you probably get points.
Which is
But people get points, so they may elect to do it.
They get a free ticket.
And that fee is paid not by the district, but by the people who so choose to pay by credit card.
That's not, that's not bad.
And it's, it's a
Get some bonus points.
Fairly steep fee, in my opinion.
Right.
Okay.
It's an option for the public.
I'll pay in pennies, as usual. Matt?
Thank you for allowing me to be here. Graduation was great. We had a, we had a great time, and a big thanks to all the people that were thanked that night. That doesn't just happen. There's a lot to do. I think what makes this district what it is, it's all about the people. And I'm glad to be in the people position. I'm excited to be working with this crew over here and with Elsie. There's a lot to do. There's a lot to get done, and a lot of good work that's already begun, and I look forward to continuing it. So thank you.
Lorraine?
Ms.
Ms.
Ms. Lorraine.
And it takes time. Congratulations, Matt, and congratulations to the newcomers. And congratulations to the board members again. I'm looking forward to working with you for another, it will be three years, but two years probably for me. And I don't want to be a scotch, Eric, but I'm married, but I kept my maiden name.
No problem.
So it just, you know, that's my mom.
I, you don't owe me an explanation. It's fine.
Putting it out there, like, maybe I'm not married.
No, 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 no. He is. You don't owe me an explanation.
You're not trying to solicit offers.
I'm not trying to put this out there.
Taking offers here?
No problem. You just, please change the myth. No problem. Done.
This is disgraceful.
It's all good. Anyway, I am so sorry that I had missed the graduation, and congratulations to all the graduates, and thank you for stating that. I wish them luck in that
You're welcome.
It was sad because it was my son's graduating class, and I had a family member that was sick that I had to tend to, so. And I cannot believe that the whole year has passed already, so have a great summer, and I'll see you next month.
In September.
Thank you. Anthony?
Doctor, could you change my name to John Hubert Jr.?
I'm going to need a little bit more proof than that.
Yes, yes.
It could be.
I went to the graduation ceremony and the moving up ceremonies. Both of them were excellent, as usual. Congratulations to Matt. Congratulations to our re-elected board members, and everyone stay cool and have a wonderful summer.
Dan?
Middle school promotion was great. High school graduation was fantastic. Three more years, and I'll sit here for another year with you. Happy summer.
You're
He's questioning whether it'll be a year.
Yeah.
Thank you. Elsie?
I want to welcome everyone, all of our new hires. This is an exciting place. I am very excited about September. We have a lot of work this summer. I have a board in my office, and we have about six more weeks before we come back to school, so that's how I look at it. I'm sorry to be the downer, but we have a lot of work to do. So I am, I am very, very excited. I also want to mention that our buildings and grounds people have been working very, very hard. And oftentimes, people believe that the summer is a downtime. It's really not. It's a time for us to work on all of our buildings, and I really want to just say thank you to Andre and to all of the members of the buildings and grounds because they have doing, they've been working round the clock, and it's hot. So some of the rooms are not as cool as we'd like them to be, so they've done a very, very good job. And Andre has been stepping up, as you've heard. He's, he's doing two jobs, and I'm very appreciative of that, so thank you. One more thing. I don't know if you know, well, you probably have heard that Brendan Casey is now the Orange County Commissioner of Emergency Services. He has asked to partner with us to be able to monitor our internal cameras, very similar to what we already do with our local police. And so he has asked if he could also be monitoring them so that if there's an emergency, he could support us. And I would like to support him that, on that, but I was just wondering if the board is in agreement with that. There would be a contract, and obviously, there would be a confidentiality paperwork that would be processed. But I'm just wondering if you guys are all in agreement. We don't have to take a vote on it, but I'm just looking for a yes.
Consensus.
Consensus, correct.
Safety of the students.
Seems like a good idea.
The safety of our students. And this is really a pilot program. They're looking to make this into a more formalized thing, but I think that it's going to be, it'll be very beneficial to the district. And Bargoff will create a
VPN tunnel. So they'll monitor our network from their network. So it's the safest way to do it.
Okay. And I just want to wish everybody a great six weeks, because then we'll be back to school again.
You've said that. Yes, welcome, everybody. Great, great graduation. Great moving up ceremony. I want to remind the board again of the retreat on September 9. We are going to have a meeting before then. But if you have any suggestions as to topics that you want to discuss at the retreat, please send them to me, along with the board self-evaluation form.